Good evening and welcome to the March first, March first, 2023 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. Happy, I don't know, what is it, calendar spring, whatever, whatever the unofficial spring it is, I guess now, right? First up on our, well, let me announce, Sharon, control will be, participating tonight is not all of the regular commissioners are present. Thank you for being here. First up is the approval of our minutes from February first, 2023. Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of February first, 2023.
Second?
So moved in second in all one favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Did I hear four ayes? I guess I did. Next up, we have a consent agenda item tonight, and there's one item on that agenda for AFP nine five zero two dash twenty twenty three, one story, five hundred seventy six square foot, twenty four by twenty four foot, addition to the rear facade of two fourteen Rabbit Road in the R ninety C medium density residential cluster development zone. You all saw that in your packet. Any questions for staff on the consent agenda?
No.
All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
It's moved in second in all one favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. And wasn't it satisfying to see the ridge beam respond to the windows in the back of this house? There's something about that that was just terribly satisfying. You'll have to look at the packet online if you want to get into it. What geek kind of stuff is happening right now on the day? All right. That takes us to our recommendation to Marion City Council for Z dash nine four, four four dash twenty twenty two, Lake Forest Mall zoning map amendment requesting to rezone one hundred and two acres of land from the C two general commercial to the M X D mixed use development zone and establish a new sketch plan. This is again a recommendation to Marion City Council. And for those watching either here in the chambers or online, our record is closed, so we will be hearing a small presentation from staff and then focusing on a discussion that will presumably formulate our recommendation to Marion Council. So Rob, please take it away.
Thank you, commissioners, and good evening. As the chair mentioned, this is the planning commission recommendation to the Marion Council for application, Z nine four four twenty twenty two, and it's being submitted in accordance with section twenty four one sixty D nine A of the city code. The joint public hearing was held on January seventeenth, twenty twenty three, and at the time of the planning commission's records closing at five P M. February seventeenth, there were one hundred and eleven exhibits in the record. To begin briefly, once again, I think we all know where the mall is, but I feel obligated to put up an aerial, just in case people don't know what we're talking about. So it's right there, close to Frederick Avenue off Lost Knife, Montgomery Village, Oden Hall, and Russell. So again, as the chair mentioned, this is to rezone from the C two to the M X D. It includes a new sketch plan, and it's subject to the requirements of the Lake Forest Mall master plan. So the sketch plan itself divides the site into sixteen blocks. Block A is a community park. C, B, D, and E define the commercial core. Block F is the location, the proposed location of the relocated and enhanced Lake Forest Transit Center. Block J is identified as a community green space and amenity location for the residential. And blocks G through O are envisioned to be a mix of townhomes, gap housing, and multifamily condominium units. That's where a lot of the focus of, and as we heard at the public hearing, Pulte will be the builder. So this is where the products will be coming in. So overall, and much in accordance with the Lake Forest Mall master plan, there is a cap of sixteen hundred dwelling units, and it also includes, you know, the multifamily. Now, as the commission may remember, there are limitations, you know, that no more, no more than ten percent of the units can be townhomes, a minimum of twenty five percent have to be gap housing, et cetera. The sketch plan, as all sketch plans, because it's a framework, it's not preliminary subdivision, sort of show up to numbers. So there's approximately three quarters of a million square feet of employment uses. And for the purposes of the sketch plan, employment uses based upon the master plan include things like R and D, office. So it brings in a lot of the growth sectors we had talked about in the visioning data analysis. So we use the broad term, a note on the sketch plan further defines what uses it includes but are not limited to. There's also a quarter million square feet of large format retail uses. This is quote unquote, in layman's terms, big box, but it's not big box because remember, we have limitations on special conditions in the master plan. So it's stacked. And then an additional two hundred and twenty thousand square feet of neighborhood scale commercial and entertainment and amusement uses. So that was really the sketch plan. You know, once again, this is, you know, where we're going from. This is the first step in a multi-step process. You know, it broadly lays out, you know, the layout, the density ranges, the height ranges, things along that, the allowable uses. As I go through the presentation, a lot of the questions, because I'm getting ready to go into the public comment aspect, are really going to be resolved at the next stage, S D P, schematic development plan, which is preliminary subdivision. And that's where we're going to get design guidelines. That's when, you know, the numbers start getting refined, the roads start getting refined and things along that. So moving on, because again, the sketch is pretty self-explanatory. There's not, you know, there wouldn't be a long presentation on my end, but based upon the public hearing and what's come out, we received another public comments, and really it focused on the areas on the screen now. Sense of place, required green area, relocation of the transit center, the filling in of stormwater management pond three, integration of civic units, uses, and the preservation of existing forested areas, and potentially daylighting an eighty-four inch stream during pipe. So one by one, the applicant submitted three response letters. One is an overall, and the other two are specifically related to the trees and the daylighting. So really summarizing what came out, the sense of place, sense of place is always a challenge in the sketch plan because it's a bubble plan. So I think they made a good argument, again, that what's unique about the site, even at the sketch plan level, it creates a sense of place, is that it's sort of anchored on both corners by these green areas, large civic greens, which is a positive. As was discussion, a block B is envisioned to almost be like a mini Rio, but on the east side of town, you know, leveraging the lake as an amenity to build an amusement entertainment district around. So that's something unique, you know, creates a new sense of place. And that, you know, much as the master plan called for, unlike in some of our other M X D zone developments, you know, the real push for the employment note is right in the heart of the development. It's not being pushed off to the edges of residential areas or other commercial areas. It's right there and basically catty corner from residential, from transit, from, from the entertainment district. So that's another thing. But, you know, as I put on this slide and mentioned in the staff analysis, the real drivers of sense of place is really going to come to fruition at S D P with the design guidelines, because that's going to include the architecture, the signage, the open space programming, landscaping strategy, and public art. The visual things is really what creates, you know, outside creates a sense of place. So, you know, for the response, you know, I, we supported what they said, knowing that really people will begin to visualize and actualize what's going on at the next stage. So with green area, there's only one bullet, because again, it reaffirms that the Lake Forest Mall master plan required thirty-five percent green space. Now, a lot of the comments that we saw, and I want to be clear, a lot of the comments we received was a form letter, for lack of a better term. You know, it's basically, people cut and pasted the same statements going forward. The commission may remember, we actually, during the Lake Forest Mall master plan, had a whole separate work session talking about this green area strategy. So where the comments say the master plan calls for forty and twenty five, it does not. What the M X D zone says is that, and that's why when we did the discussion during the work session of the thirty-five percent overall, we may actually end up with more green space than we would if we did the strict interpretation of forty and twenty five, hence why it's a special condition. So the transit center location, again, this was sort of a big one, and this, where its location is really in response to Montgomery County Department of Transportation, because they wanted, you know, they had said all along, they want to be closer to three fifty-five. Operationally, it works better on Russell. And we, you know, we support that. You know, as a policy, the city has supported three fifty-five B R T for a number of years now. So I think, I understand where some of the comments were coming from, because, you know, in a sense, it's coming from people who live in the immediate neighborhood, but we have to take the larger regional view for the benefits. And again, three fifty-five B R T operates a lot better with a transit center on Russell Avenue than almost contra flow on Lost Knife. Now, one of the concerns expressed by people in comments was, hey, if you're moving that, we're not getting rid of a bus stop. You know, again, you know, M D, M C D O T has said, you know, that they'll continue bus service along Lost Knife, and the existing bus stop is going to remain. It's just not going to serve seven lines in a future B R T. So that's really the difference. And I think to help really bring stuff rash, you know, into focus, the applicant has submitted this diagram that basically with the relocation discusses walk sheds. But I think the important thing, and let's see if we can zoom real fast, it wasn't just, you know, your typical as the crow flies. They actually did the measurements along routes, one going through the site and one going the outer side, and it still only equates to an additional ten minutes. So again, the concerns that it is, you know, that this plan is going to, you know, create, you know, so many issues, you know, even if you need it, it's an additional ten minutes, no matter where you go, you know, come from, ten minutes from Asbury, ten minutes from cider mill. So, you know, staff, again, we obviously support the relocation, the proposed location of the transit center. So stormwater management pond three, a lot of people have hyped on this and said, you know, the master plan recommended retention of all three ponds, but they leave out the part that we were under the understanding at the point in time we did the master plan that all three ponds were a regional facility. Finding out after the fact that pond three does not serve any other properties, and it's not a regional, that's why we, you know, working with the applicant, thought it was better to fill it in and potentially make better use of that site with the relocated transit center, more centralized to everything than keeping a pond, especially with, you know, we have to keep in mind, at S D P, we're going to have preliminary stormwater management. Whatever function that old pond served is more than going to be offset with the new required stormwater management that's going to occur throughout the site. So it's really not a loss. You know, there wasn't, because it was a pond, there was no enhanced forested buffer around it. You know, again, it was literally, you know, just, you know, a small pond with, with some stuff on the edges that if the state wanted to, they could have come in and mowed it down. So we do not view this as a tremendous loss. Again, if we had known at the point in time of the master plan that it was not a regional facility, we would have amended the recommendation to only focus on ponds one and two and not include three. So the civic use, this got a lot of statements during the public hearing and afterwards, but we note a lot of the statements, not all, but, but many came from county residents. So, you know, I want to be upfront, the master plan, when we did it, you know, we said, hey, there's great opportunities for civic uses, but nowhere in the document did we require it, or, and we were even clear in the discussion of the narrative, that the expectation was not the applicant to give away a free one and operate it and fund it. So really where I'm going is their response is even beyond what, you know, the master plan called for. You know, they've called out the potential now specifically for up to thirty thousand square feet of these, you know, sort of regional, you know, that could be located on block C, D, E, or F. And the applicant has made the commitment in their response to explore opportunities to lease the space to the nonprofit or through a public-private partnership for civic uses. And that's exactly what the master plan had called for. It was to explore that. And I mean, it's clear that other stakeholders will need to participate in the funding, operating, and programming for such a civic use. So I just want to make clear, the applicant, the city, we all understand, you know, social responsibility, but we also understand there's such a thing as takings and, and, you know, required obligations. And we were conscious in developing the master plan not to require it, because we don't know where things go. But it's obvious, the applicant is open to listen and wants to work with the community. And if they want to lease space, as with anybody else, they have now accommodated that. So, you know, we, staff supports this response. So now into the two needy ones, the preservation of the tree area and the daylighting. So with the tree area, this is a one point six seven acre site created in, you know, actually documented in nineteen ninety-eight. You know, based upon the size of the trees, trees typically average anywhere from the fifty to eighty year old range, looking at the diameters. The stand is dominated by oak species, and even, you know, going back to the N R I, it was listed as moderate retention, moderate health. In response to a lot of the comments, you know, a certified arborist went back out and did the further assessment and crafted the response letter and the photographs. So again, from his perspective, the stand is in decline due to observed reduction of canopy growth and prevalence of invasive replacing natives. And of the approximately twenty-eight specimen trees in the, in the stand, approximately one-third of the trees are in good health. So two-thirds of it, the trees are in decline. The remaining specimens are in fair to poor health. So really what's going on, and, you know, we tend to agree, but I added some additional things, is, you know, given that it's an edge condition surrounded on three sides by roads, that never does well for forest. You know, it's already in decline. It's got a lot of invasives. We originally, you know, again, the applicant explored this at, at sort of the recommendation of staff, because we were looking at, right at that corner, you know, you have the library right across the street, you have cider mill. We, if one of the goals of the master plan was to shrink barriers and better connect to the surrounding population, knowing that they're going to have to do forest con, which doesn't exist on the site, knowing that they have to do green area, which, you know, currently isn't on the site, we weren't as concerned, especially looking at the N R I, that this is not a high retention value forest. I know a lot of the comments say that, but the facts just don't bear that out. So the death and decline of the largest contributors of the canopy is probably going to continue. And sort of building on the last one, the point, the last point on this screen is what I was bringing up. So right now, there's maybe like maybe around three acres of canopy coverage on the entire hundred and two acres. Just at a minimum through forest con, you're going to get a net additional sixteen acres of forest con cover. So, you know, the arguments in some of the comments that, you know, there's going to be less green space, and there's not going to be, there's going to be sixteen acres equivalency above the three acres existing of new forest con. So where I wanted to come in was, you know, beginning about five years ago, the city of Gaithersburg in the mid-Atlantic in a hole has begun to see a weird die-off of oaks. Some of you may remember about four years ago, five years ago, the giant white oak in the Kentland that got taken down, that the public lost its mind over, but once they took it down, they found out the entire inside was rotted. I checked with Mark Scafidi over at Department of Public Works, and we're still seeing it. And I included into the record an article from Maryland Extension Service talking about that. And they really don't know what's causing it, but there are some specific signs that this is going, one of which is frass, which is evident in photo four, that is like the sawdust stuff you find at the base when there's heavy insect infestation. So one of these pictures is reflecting that. Another one is dieback, branch dieback. That's photos seven and nine are both showing that. And then trunk wounds, which one, five, almost you can go through all of them, but, but really one, five, and eight show the tremendous, you know, amount. And again, going back, that if two-thirds of your main canopy, and the most percentage of that is these oaks, you know, the arguments that this is a highly valuable, retainable, old growth forest just aren't true. Staff's of the opinion, this, this will go in the near term, because we're seeing it everywhere, and we're seeing it regionally. Maybe I would have a different aspect if it wasn't so oak-dominated, but the majority of specimen trees are all white oaks and red oaks. And we're seeing it, again, not just citywide, but regionally. So again, I am not one who quickly goes, let's get rid of trees, but this one in the balance, you know, if your argument is, we have to save old forest, well, this old forest is going to decline and go away on its own. So that goal is really taken out. And, and again, with what, by moving forward, we'll come in with the net additional sixteen acres through various other means, on parks, everything else, we're more than going to offset that. So daylighting the storm drain. Just as some background, there is a seven-foot diameter pipe entering the site from Oden Hall Road, and it is approximately thirty feet deep into the ground. Any sort of daylighting at a minimum is going to affect block F, G, H, and I. And just to daylight the storm drain, so that means, you know, just uncover it, you know, get rid of the pipe and have a concrete flow, it would be ten feet wide and thirty foot deep. And to give you perspective, this is, you know, the ten feet and nine, and-
And to be clear, Rob, it would be thirty feet deep, not because of the volume of water, but because that's the level, water level datum relative to where it comes into the site.
Yes, sir. So these bottom ones, and it's in the packet, that are a little bit more visible. So this is showing S L one, S L two, S L three, where stuff comes in. So S L one, this one is right where it comes in at Oden Hall. And you can already see, the pipe is, you know, what is it, thirty or twenty-five feet below grade when it comes in. In the middle, you know, basically where we wanted that Lake Forest Boulevard to contour road connection, it's over thirty feet deep. So this, there's one thing that has been coming up that we hear when we have this discussion, and I think this is important to talk upfront. So this is just uncovering it, and this is, you know, nobody would do this, you know, but we just wanted to use it as the example. But a lot of people bring up Carroll Creek and Frederick. It is not an apples to apples. Carroll Creek was constructed infrastructure for flood mitigation. It is not based upon, you know, existing waters of the state or waters of the U S being piped underneath. And that's why you can go up there at points and you just see stagnant pools sitting in concrete basin. So if we had to use sort of example, this would be, you know, if we did the Carroll Creek mile, you know, this is just a concrete trench going all across. From us, as we mentioned, you know, this, this doesn't meet the intent of the master plan or even what the public was asking for. This isn't attractive, and this isn't an amenity. It's a ten-foot wide, nine-hundred-foot-long concrete trench.
Yeah. Rob, just for people listening, I think you, you said something there that's important that I don't want to, want to make sure we don't gloss over, which is the difference between, from a state environmental, an environmental planning standpoint, between flood control mitigation, AKA Carroll Creek, and naturally occurring streams here and the standards that apply. I think that's, I mean, you're getting at that.
Yeah. So both the Army Corps of Engineers and the Maryland Department of the Environment don't necessarily regulate flood mitigation infrastructure or stormwater ponds. You know, their goal is waters of the state and waters of the U S. As shown in the record, this was, you know, walkers run, it's a pipe stream, but it's piped in multiple places. And the state, while it acknowledges that it is a water of the state, it also views it as a full loss and doesn't need mitigation. So right now, you know, what's being proposed by the applicant is eventually relocating this pipe. And while it will require a permit, it's, it's different. It's not like, you know, there's no stream valley buffers on this. There's no flood planes associated with this. You know, they're not, you know, they're fine with it being relocated, and the permit process is, you know, a technical, technicality that you have to go through. But, but they're not viewing it as if it was, you know, an open channel with base flow, you know, and fish and everything else. So I think that, you know, and this, that really goes more to sort of the second exhibit that came in. And, you know, the second example scenario that was submitted by the applicant sort of reflects to, to the level they were going to invest the money in the engineering, a true daylighted stream. And really, you know, what, you know, in order to get like a foot, a foot and a half, two feet depth, you know, you're going to need a channel with meanders. It's basically fifty feet wide. But again, you know, the thirty feet below grade, you know, is still an issue. And if you truly want to daylight a stream and make it natural, you have to come back up and off. And, you know, I think the real issue for this is if everybody remembers, inside the main circle, there's only allowed eighty-four, eighty-six acres. Of that, only seventy-five acres is developable. So, you know, when the rough estimates say you're basically going to eat up thirty-seven acres in grading and slopes and everything else to put the daylighting, the reality is this just does not work. It's a great idea. If we could make it work, that would be awesome. But given the depth and the cost to put in the infrastructure and the reduction in residential development potential and density, we wouldn't achieve the master plan goals. And, you know, as the applicant has said in two different statements, you know, should they be required to daylight, it makes more sense for them to retain the C two zoning and go from there and, and just, you know, suspend this application. So again, the Christine Valley blocks, B, E, F, G, H, I, and J would basically be eliminated. And the transit center on block F, you know, if not being relocated, just wouldn't occur. So this is really what we're talking about. This first graphic, this gray, this shows the level of impact. This is Lost Knife Road. So this is the whole site. This isn't just a quarter of the site. And this profile, really, if I can get the page thing not to show, I'm sorry, shows you the profile. So this is the thirty feet in depth. I mean, again, part of the things that would be required with this, we'd have twelve-foot-high retaining walls holding up Russell Avenue. City doesn't want to maintain twelve-foot walls in their right-of-way just to do this. The slope, this is even at a five percent. So this isn't, you know, so I think the gist of this is, even if this isn't completely accurate, it's close enough that it's evident this would be a tremendous impact and that it basically renders the project infusible, not, not just for W R S. You know, we're sort of the opinion internally, I don't know if anybody would buy this, if they know, if they were told, hey, it's, it's a hundred and two acres, but you only get to develop forty of it.
And if you had to turn the clock back and look at when the stream was natural, and at some point, it was, something was flowing near there or near there in kind of a natural state, it's probably also likely that once it was decided that it would be piped and put underground, the grade above it was raised, like the, the whole, that whole area was regraded potentially. And so it's flowing at its natural elevation, but everything else has been pushed up. So it's, it's two problems, right? It was undergrounded, but it was also that the whole grading of the area has changed, and the viability of a stream there wouldn't exist in the natural topography anyway, right? It's not, it's not as if it's just below the surface, or it's restoring a topography that's kind of lurking there. That's gone, because the whole area, beyond, even beyond the mall site, right? Include Montgomery Village Avenue, go back, you know, all the, all that's probably been regraded.
I'm sure, I mean, we didn't go into that level of depth, but what I can tell you is-
Given the evidence that the creek is flowing, or the, the old stream is, the water's flowing at that level, that suggests that there's little or no remnant of where all of that originally stood for its original topo.
Put another way, a hundred years ago, that stream was not thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five feet below the grade. It was, it was what we all wish was there now, but that is long gone.
But just as another example, so as I mentioned, you know, this isn't even the only pipe there. You know, I was just digging around, because I was curious before the meeting. The headwaters of this is really, you know, all the way up almost to where Mega Mark currently is, that far up, three fifty-five, and it's piped there. If you go there, you will actually see, because they had a partial infrastructure collapsed, and that pipe even is fifteen feet below grade behind. So, you know, a lot of the arguments, I don't want to come across as we, you know, the city doesn't support, you know, good streams, good waterways, good, good everything else. But I'm going to be realistic, is this, to me, this is not the area, this is not the hill to die upon over that. I think there's just too much going against it. And again, I think in the grander scheme for what benefits the city, if not daylighting this and moving forward with the sketch plan is in the best interest of the city, as expressed by the public through the Lake Forest Mall master plan process, I think that's the direction we should go. So that is overall everything. Again, as we come into the staff recommendation, you know, staff, you know, we think, not every plan's going to be perfect, not every plan's going to please everyone, but this plan, the sketch plan now, understanding that there's going to be a lot more details fleshed out at S D P, after S D P is going to be the phasing of the final site plans, there's going to be even more details fleshed out there. But I think for the sketch plan area, the applicant and his team have done an excellent job of complying with many of the sketch plan, you know, requirements. They met all the special conditions, which is one of the findings. You know, they, they've worked with the city, they've worked with surrounding areas, you know, I think they've listened. I think it's evident in even just that small edit of mentioning the thirty, you know, the thirty thousand square feet, you know, they have no obligation under the, under the master plan to do that. So, you know, we are supportive. We're, like anybody else, everybody's cautious and anxious to see what happens at the next stage when more details come out. But we want to remind everyone, you know, the recommendation for the planning commission this evening is on the sketch plan. You know, if there's some thoughts in your discussion about things you'd like them to consider at S D P, you know, we always welcome those. But I think really the recommendation this evening is really towards the rezoning of the sketch. And as you may note on here, you know, we have four conditions. One of them is, you know, receiving approval from S H A. You folks may remember along Montgomery Village Avenue, we're proposing relocating the signalized intersection to get a better, more centralized entrance and design. So that's it. What I was mentioning about the stream in the pond, we didn't put a time on this, because it's difficult when you're dealing with the state with this, but we just want to keep reminding people they're going to have to get the joint permit application approval, both for filling in the pond and relocating the storm drain. None of us view it as an issue. It's a technicality, but we still want to keep it as a condition. The last two are coming, you know, from our economic development. Basically, we just want a revised market study and fiscal impact analysis based upon the S D P numbers when it comes in. They had submitted some items into the record at sketch, but it was so broad and fluid, we want to get a better sense, really, of what is coming in a preliminary subdivision rather than the up to numbers. And especially with preliminary subdivision, then you get a better sense of the phasing for the final site plan. So you have more, you know, when you read these, you have a better sense of absorption rates, what that means in real time. So we're recommending those. So it's really just with those four conditions. Again, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have technical questions, as the chair mentioned, you know, while we can't, the record is closed, we can't take in new stuff. If there's some technical clarification questions, the applicant's team's here and available to answer any of those, as long as they don't introduce new items into the discussion.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Question on the, on the transit center, because the, the one public comment that was in the record that stood out to me in regards to the transit center that I thought really was worthy of additional discussion was the issue of traffic impacts. And I'm assuming as part of the traffic study that's required is for S D P, transit center relocation, the impact of the transit center relocation is all going to be part of traffic studies in that area, correct?
I can verify with Engineering Services Division Chief Fields. But I think, yeah, I understand, you know, the applicant is continuing to be in negotiations with M C D O T about this. We want to get it in. They're obviously doing modeling numbers also. So we would want to know what the impacts. But again, another reason why they liked block F and closer to Russell was, you're not then directing stuff through the heart of the development. You know, you're staying on the surrounding arterials, you're getting in and you're getting out.
I think that the concern from the public that was noted was, had very little to do with the traffic impact on the site. It was the traffic impact of relocating large vehicles, buses, you know, Russell's two-lane road in that area has a fair amount of traffic of people cutting over to Montgomery Village Avenue. And so making sure that the traffic study, and this may require M C D O T, you know, doing a portion of the traffic study themselves, but looking at the turning radiuses and queuing and how the traffic flow along Russell and those arterial arterials work with the higher volume of bus traffic that's going to be funneled to that site versus where it is now. It's just, it's something that's going to change. And I think we do want to make sure at that time, when we start flushing out the details, that we're not solving one problem and creating ripple effects for the- and creating ripple effects for the community.
Understood.
Can I, can I add a little bit to that? Because I was thinking about that as well, but I was also thinking about, I mean, that's a very complicated traffic area with, you know, the turning from Montgomery Village Avenue onto, um, Quincy Arch Road, um, Road and, and that, all that whole area. And I, I'm sure it's going to change, it's going to have to change, but how's that flow? I think that...
Yeah, let, let me, let me jump in real fast, Commissioner Warren Moore. I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, but I want to make sure everybody's clear on how the 355 BRT operates.
Okay.
So it is a single lane in the median that is peak hour flow. So the other way is mixed traffic. The intent is by having the station essentially right here, um, Montgomery Village 355 is being avoided. So really what they're doing is they are coming up Lake Forest Boulevard, quickly getting in, getting out, staying on Russell, and they don't enter 355 until they get to, what is it, Christopher?
Christopher, okay.
So they are avoiding the heaviest intersection. So a lot of the worries and complaints about, you know, Montgomery Village Avenue, they're, they're just crossing through a lighted intersection.
Okay.
Um, and, and again, I think for the most part, they are staying off Oden Hall also. So it's really just the short distance on Lake Forest Boulevard, you, you know, coming in through that, you know, signalized intersection. And then, as I said, opposite peak flow, you know, it's going to be in mixed traffic.
But, and I don't want to get too, too down in the weeds, but I'm, I'm also thinking about, because we want to make this a very walkable environment and then, you know, to walk over to the library and, and that other thing. And then there's other stuff on the other side of the road coming, you know, and we want that to be, you know, integrated into this new opportunity, so.
And I, I, I think the, part of what maybe, that just occurred to me that maybe folks are reacting to is frankly more about the design of the current transit center, which is not how you design an intermodal transit center, it, you know, at all. So the devil is in the details of how it's designed here. If it pulls the queuing and the loading and all of that heavy traffic actually off of the road, actually could be a drastic improvement for traffic circulation.
Where it currently is on Lost Knife is, is a nightmare. You, the, the commission may remember a number of years ago, you know, we were approached by MCDOT looking to expand along our section of Oden Hall with Sawtooth, but it still said it wasn't even going to meet the demand. So it's just from an operational standpoint, and I think that's what's getting lost a lot on the public as we step back and look at this. It's not, hey, what is best for Asbury, Cider Mill and Lake Forest? We're still going, this is 355 BRT. What is best, you know, for the city as a whole and for the operational system from Germantown down to Bethesda?
Right.
You know, how do we keep ride times short? How do we boost ridership numbers? You know, what are some of these design criteria that help operational success? As opposed to immediate convenience for the way it's always been.
And if, if we do this right, the walkability to the station is going to be improved as well, because right now you're putting people into open parking lots and all kinds of situations. And, and kind of to that point, um, and this is a good example where we won't know for sure the way this is all going to work until really some heavy design is done. This is, I mean, the idea that there's this dot on a plan is, you know, it's as good as the next person's guess about where it needs to be based on some really high-level macro assumptions about access and traffic flow. But we don't know any of this is true until somebody really gets in and starts designing that block and figuring out which way things need to point and how they need to stack. So to that point, if during that process, which I'm assuming will begin to emerge during SDP, probably not, not after, but not too much before, but right during SDP, some of these things will start to get, get worked out. And some of them have to do with big, big time calculations on turning radiuses, some have to do with, you know, broader, how, how you get to point A from point B downward. We're not obliged to put it on this dot or on this block exactly the way this is shown once that process starts. It can begin to shift and shimmy as it makes sense for the plan.
Potentially on the block. And that's really, you know, obviously any...
But just to stay right there, that, my point is, looking at a sketch plan where this block is identified as the transit station, or is the, the place, that all could really begin to shift and morph as the actual design of the blocks around it are, are developed, right? I mean, it could, it could move south, it could move north, it could move...
Within the block.
Well, but I mean, the roads themselves could shift a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's why with sketch plan, this is not preliminary subdivision, but the preliminary subdivision really has to reflect this block layout. But this is why, again, any developer is, you know, the commission is well aware, you know, has an idea of what their final thing is, but we said step that back for sketch. You know, let's set up what's occurring in the blocks and let's let the SDP, this just as a reminder for the public, it's essentially 80% engineering. So we're going to know, you know, build two lines, footprints, we can know how, how stuff is going to stack out and layout. You know, the roads, any road code waivers that are needed, you know, all that, all comes at SDP, the TIS comes at SDP.
But my point is between now and then, if the right answer for this is to be oriented in a slightly different way, be shifted, be whatever it is, to make it really work with all of these assumptions and all of these needs, it could look a little different than this, and that's okay. It could, that, we have that flexibility, right?
Yeah, but I, I just want to be clear that essentially it's going to be in whatever the final form of block F is roughly in this area. Is it going to be right up on Russell or is it going to be maybe focusing on Street Five? We don't know yet. This is why you do the exercise.
And I think the same needs to be said about the green space where, um, there's a gross calculation of percent area coverage for green space, but how, how we manipulate where it happens on buffers and on edges and within, you know, sort of enclosed parks and things like that, that can again morph as the SDP plan comes together and makes, we make more sense out of where it really has the most effect.
So, so there is some idea, and on the screen right now, you know, from, from the joint public hearing packet, is the preliminary green space exhibit. So obviously they have identified, you know, obviously some open green area, you know, true...
I understand.
Parks, but all this other stuff, yeah, you're, we're going to have to get through if we don't know how the multifamily's laying out, we don't necessarily know how we're programming the multifamily green area amenities, um, you know, as we go into these roads.
What I'm responding to is some of the comments about where buffers ought to be and where they shouldn't be and how things should be screened. We have flexibility to make that work better as we get into the part of design of this as well. I just want to make that point for people that are, they're thinking that we've locked down exactly where, where parks and buffers and green spaces are going to be.
Can I ask a question related to that?
Yeah.
So where do we come out on, um, the phasing and how are we, how are you approving, like, you're obviously going to demolish the mall, I think I saw the timeline, the end of next year?
I'm not committing to any timelines.
But, but do we agree on phasing?
So what the applicant has stated is from a phasing standpoint, given a lot of the infrastructure challenges and demolition of the mall, we will probably see one SDP because that makes the most sense logically for how you do that. Final site plan phasing, that, that's, you know, more to be discussed as we go through the SDP process. But given, you know, um, you know, there's a lot of unplatted county storm drains running through this site, you know, we have these underground pipes, we have all these other, you know, hindrances, and given the current subdivision, be very difficult to try to do this in a parsed manner, especially with the physical plan of, of the mall being smack dab in the center and gobbling up so much space. And, and, you know, even that would be a challenge to try to take down piecemeal. So I, I think the applicant has recognized, you know, the best project way of moving forward for the SDP is one holistic SDP, which at 80% engineering means there's going to be a lot of work with this. But that's why I want to keep explaining, you know, certain things that people are asking for. Certain things may be set in stone at the end of sketch, but other stuff, to the chair's point, is going to be very fluid because there's still a lot of design work to be done.
I'm not sure if you're asking this specifically, but I also know in the, in the applicant's, one of the documents he had explained that entitlements are the trigger for being able to then move on to a demolition phase and then that's, you know, there's some, there's some economics behind that. So we'll have to kind of support that, see where that lands in terms of timing. Um, okay. We really have two parts to discuss here. So the, I'm sorry, any other questions on the, on the presentation?
Questions.
No, okay. We really have two fundamental questions. One is the rezoning from, from C2 to MXD and, and then the other is whether the sketch plan is ready to move forward. So on the rezoning, um, does anybody have any reservations with moving to MXD on this site?
No, I, I did want to say that this, I don't, I can't see us not moving forward with that, because this will give the city and, and the developer an opportunity, lots of opportunity, to make this something that's going to be viable for the future. And that's what we're thinking about. And we can't move forward without moving to MSB. I, that's just kind of what I'm thinking.
Good.
Yeah.
That on the, on the sketch plan, um, with all that we've seen, heard, heard from the public and heard from the applicant and now from, from Rob to kind of recap, um, do you feel like we have any gaps left to, to address before, um, formulating a recommendation?
On, on, I mean, I can just start, I, I don't think there are gaps per se. I think, you know, the applicant's response and Rob, what you walked through, I think addresses a, a lot of the concerns in my mind satisfactorily. Um, I think the, again, that the devil is sort of in the details of what happens between now and, and SDP. Just going down in my head, the, the bullets, place in green space, uh, you know, I don't have any concerns about, um, the, you know, obviously everyone's keenly now understands after the, this process, the focus that's going to be placed on, place in green space and design and, um, trust the, the applicant and their design team will come forward with something that we can all opine on at the appropriate time. Um, traffic transit center, you know, I think we discussed, uh, just now. On the civic uses front, um, I really appreciate the applicant, you know, listing that amount of potential use as an area. I think frankly that the, the burden now shifts to the city, the county, you know, other nonprofit agencies to start to brainstorm and collaborate with the applicant to, to figure out what, what could be the use there. If they're willing to provide space for, for lease or for an agency to come in, you know, that's where I would encourage, I, I don't know who the right person is. Obviously we have county residents who, from Cider Mill who are making some requests, um, very eloquently for, for services and, and things that serve them. So I think there's an opportunity for, um, on, on the government and nonprofit side to start to bring people together and really brainstorm about who the right people are and, and start those discussions with the applicant now so that that can be baked into leasing discussions and, and pro formas going forward.
Well, and programming, I mean, just that there's, there's actual facilities in play that can, can do what they need to do.
I mean, if, if the applicant knows there's, you know, making up a, a nonprofit who's going to sign a 20-year lease for a, you know, community sports facility, that'd be something I'd assume they'd want to know now and not, you know, find out four years from now after the programming set, so.
I, I, yeah, I agree with that. And, you know, as I, you know, I, I try not to get too far ahead of my skis, you know, but we do, and maybe I even shouldn't say this, but we, we, it would be nice, let's say this, it would be nice to have something Strathmore-esque, not exactly that, but something where we could hold, you know, an opportunity to have some sort of venue, whether it's sports or entertainment or something, up this way. And I think that's an opportunity that I'm hoping that we see.
And the, the last thing I was just going to add is on, on the forest, uh, forest conservation on, on that corner, I, you know, driving around Old Town, the number of large 100-year-old plus oaks that are disappearing on a yearly basis, that are rotted out, hollow, experiencing all the decline, seeing, you know, I, I don't have any doubt about the, the analysis that, that's been done. Um, and, you know, unfortunate is, it'd be, it'd be great to have a, you know, 100-year-old old growth forest in the middle of this development, talk about a great sense of place, but, you know, the likelihood that it A survives construction and B survives more than five years after construction is low enough that, you know, the analysis, I think, supports the, the position of the applicant.
Well, and didn't we get in the analysis that it wasn't that old to begin with? That there was a few trees in there that were, um, from that?
Uh, again, the estimate chair, from looking at the various range of diameters, you know, again, a lot of these trees are like in the 50 to 80-year range. So some of it, you know, predated, but some of, a lot of those trees that are in there that were shown were, you know, were post-construction of the mall. So this thing, again, that this was this old growth forest that's been around since the pilgrims, just, it's not a true narrative.
Yeah. So that's my, that's my sort of...
I just, maybe I'm, and you know me, I'm just always all over the place. But I, I do want to say that I really appreciate the thoroughness that you and your team, you know, the city and the developers have given to this. I, I, I'm very excited that, you know, this is going to be a blank slate and, and we have a great opportunity, because this is going to be a gateway to the city, you know? I'm really looking forward, I mean, I'm telling you, we're talking years down the road, but I'm looking forward to what we come up with.
I was going to say the same thing. I'm just very appreciative of the thoroughness that you've done and the seriousness of they, how you approach this, because, um, we went through years, um, working on this together and I'm just very grateful that you've listened to every, every, um, recommendation that the, the community has made, so thank you for that.
Excellent. So I'm going to leave you with one theme that I picked up on from the, the public testimony. Um, and, and there were lots of really great, insightful, thoughtful, um, looks at very specific elements. We've talked about a lot of them and I don't think that they disappear from the discussion. They just be, they might take on a slightly different form as the plan is fleshed up. But one of the overarching themes that I want to make sure we really pay attention to is, and many folks said this in specific ways and it, and sort of implied ways, that it won't be good enough to be just good enough. This really has to reach beyond the conventional and the reach beyond, um, what might be the expected or the, or the, or the kind of tried and true, um, solutions for sites like this. And, and this really should be, what should emerge from this is, is some innovation, some surprises, some things that really become unique and special, not because the sense of place happens to be a facade that looks like another town or something, but because it's truly a unique and innovative approach to doing civic, um, engagement with, with a new community, with doing, um, residential unit types, with doing, um, mixes of commercial and residential, things like that where we were on that edge 30 years ago, 40 years ago, right? With some of the early, early planning in the city for, for MXD. It's time to come back to that as a, as a real goal, not just kind of hitch another wagon to that same train and, and keep going. It's, it's really time to start thinking about how this, this looks different, because it's a different world and this is a different part of the city and it's a different, different opportunity. Um, that's a really, you know, grossly vague, um, statement to make, um...
It's the vision of the master plan.
We're immersed, well, we're immersed in this stuff all the time and we see a lot of things that look very familiar. And it's great to have the work and the effort and the energy, but it really does need that extra kind of kick in the, in the pants to get past what, what we probably could find somewhere else. And, and I want, I want this to be the opportunity for us to, to demonstrate something new and innovative, or for you all to demonstrate, demonstrate something new and innovative. And it'll probably come in different forms. I can't even begin to imagine what those are, but, but I think that ought to become a lot of what we start talking about now as we move into SDP. So, if that's okay with you.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Ask Greg, Greg will take the SDP, so the more of the weight's going to fall on Greg.
Okay, Greg, you've got your, you've got, you've got your challenge.
Sounds good.
Your boss heard it to us.
Right, right, John's over there looking at you.
All right. Um, we have to forward a recommendation to the mayor and council. Their, the, the recommendation for the recommendation from staff is to, is to move forward with an approval of the rezon and then the sketch plan with the four conditions. Any concerns with the conditions?
No.
Any additions or, um, okay?
No.
All right, if not, um, I think we're ready for our motion then. And, and there's a recommendation for you have there. Okay, good. Actually, you don't.
No, I don't. I don't have it.
I, I've got it.
You got it, okay.
Mr. Chair, I recommend, or I move that the planning commission, based on the findings presented here, uh, in, in the, in the exhibits and the evidence in the record, recommend approval of Z944-2022 to the mayor and city council with the four conditions that are present in the record.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and it sounds like enthusiastically.
Yes, enthusiastically aye.
Approved. So thank you very much all.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Now the hard work starts.
Yes.
This is the easy part.
Passes the years for you.
All right. Next on our agenda is from the commission.
So please say that the Countland's Community Foundation is going to sponsor the first New Urbanism Day on April 29th. Actually, we're going to do it on April 28th and 29th, and our favorite John Schlicking is going to be a speaker. And perhaps Marina will do a docent tour with, D P Z will do a docent tour with John. But mark your calendars, we're going to have a restaurant appreciation evening on that Friday night, the 28th, and then the 29th will be an all-day event. So more to come on that, and-
Hey, is that through-
The star of the show will be there.
Is that through the foundation? Like, if you want more information, is that on the foundation webpage or?
When I write it, it will be.
Oh.
I have to write it this weekend and then coordinate with John and our team. We've got, we've got the best team ever coming up with these ideas, so.
Okay.
And we've got the best city that's going to allow us to send lanterns across the lake.
Can this be?
Lit lanterns.
Oh, really?
Yes, and someone has to go and fish it out of the lake on their canoe, which we haven't found yet.
I hope that was you, Sharon.
Well, my husband really wants to do that, but I'm like, you're not swimming out there, no, no, no.
Can, can, I'm just trying to think of the, kind of the way to get the word out. Is this something that can be echoed on the city website too, when it's sort of-
Oh, it would be very fun.
Yeah, I can ask.
Or even like a little commercial or something.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, kind of, so it rises beyond just-
Oh, it's going to be quite a day. We're going to have a lot of the old Countland's memorabilia on video and the courthouse. And then that afternoon, we're going to have, well, of course, the evening is when we have the lanterns coming from the carriage house and around the lake. But the carriage house is a site, it's like a museum, and we don't ever go there. So it may be part of the tour, but it's definitely going to be the place that people start to create these lanterns and put their words on it and write it. And then it's also the 20th anniversary of the Arts Barn, it's the 30th anniversary of the Countland's 5K. So that's why we want this to be a special year.
Sounds good.
Good.
Good to hear. Okay, Danny.
So we're still developing the N P C A Annual Conference, we, the 40th Annual Conference. I reached out to the, some big names, and they said it's a little too early to be our keynote speaker, but I'm going to keep pushing. But we want to make this very special, and I'm hoping that you all, as my colleagues and cohorts, will support me this 40th anniversary N P C A Annual Conference in October.
November, that's right.
No, October 24th to the 26th. We're making it three days, normally it's two days, we're making it three days, so. If you all can mark your calendars and can come out and support, that'd be really great. I did want to thank you, John, for your warm wishes to me today. It's great to be back, and I'm looking forward to getting busy and helping out.
All right, thanks, Danny.
Nothing.
Anything tonight?
Nothing for me.
Greg, how are we looking on?
Yeah, a couple updates. First, I want to give the commission update on the comprehensive zoning code review and update to Chapter 24. We hosted two virtual kickoff meetings last week with the public, noon and 7:00 P. M. Both were well-attended, I would say, 30, about 30 people in all. We did record both of the sessions, and they will be uploaded to the project page as well. And then just some next steps on that. So our consultants currently working through a diagnostics report of our code, it's going to take some time, obviously. But once that, we get that, we review it, it will also be on the project page, and it will conclude with two additional public forums, again, with the community kind of go over the findings of that diagnostics report. So again, a lot of exciting things coming forward with the review of the code.
Is the kickoff up on the site yet? Because I tried it last week, I think.
The website or the meetings? The videos?
Well, there was a, I guess I'm talking about the kickoff meeting itself, it looked like there was a-
They are not uploaded yet, this evening when I checked, but I would imagine they should be up very shortly.
Okay.
Can I go back, and I forgot about this, and it's sort of important, and I shared this with John offline at our last meeting, but there was yet another serious accident on the corner of Clopper Road and Watkins Mill. And it's, it's really, it's rising to the level of urgency that we look at that corner and look at signaling that left turn, because there are lots of folks coming down Clopper Road, making that left turn on the Watkins Mill to go to 270. And there's been, as I said, yet another serious accident on that, in that, at that intersection, so, you know. And I know, John, you said they've been working on that, but it's just really, you know, just a tragedy, another tragedy, because we've already had one death there at that intersection, and we just don't want it to continue. Safety has to be primary.
Well, I know our Engineering Services Director, Brian Fields, in Public Works, has been looking at this very seriously. I meant to get an update before tonight. I'll check on that tomorrow.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Sure.
And then the only update I have is a couple of updates on some of the meetings coming up, right? Next meeting is February, not February, March 15th, wrong month, apologize. And then we have two work sessions scheduled. One is on the 355 B R T for March 13th, and then a joint work, joint public hearing on the Nike sketch plan for March 20th.
I'll put you on the spot, but I believe this is unrelated, but something that might have happened or is going to happen, the county showed, did the county show the council this new high school plan, or is that not yet out there?
The Crown High School?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's currently under review by staff. It will be coming for the planning commission as a courtesy view for the M O U in the near future.
So it's coming up? It hasn't, okay. I know they got an update, I guess generally, on maybe the capital plan or something, and that came up, but the plan itself isn't yet out there?
It's public. I mean, again, it's been submitted to staff, we're reviewing it currently, texting on our D R T U agenda for tomorrow.
Okay.
But yeah, it will be before the planning commission in the near future.
Great. That's exciting. Thanks, Greg.
Yep.
Mr. Schlicking?
Good evening.